I'd like to welcome everybody to the Bossier City Council Meeting for Tuesday, July the 2nd, 2019. I'm gonna give the invocation and we'll have the Pledge of Allegiance by Councilmember Thomas Harvey. Please bow your heads. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this beautiful day that you've given us, or we thank you for the freedom that you have given us in this country and for those who have defended that freedom. Lord, we pray for those in our community who may be sick or hurting, and Lord, we pray for wisdom for our nation and for our state and for us in this city council meeting today. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roachow?
Mr. Montgomery?
Here.
Mr. Larkin?
Here.
Mr. Darby?
Here.
Mr. Irwin?
Here.
Mr. Williams?
Here.
Mr. Free?
Here.
Mr. Harvey?
Here.
All present.
Okay, we need to approve the minutes of the July 18, 2019 Regular Meeting and dispense with the reading.
Shall move.
Second. So we have a first by Papa Williams and a second by Tommy Harvey.
Mr. Free, did you get off your screen?
Did I get off my screen? I don't understand your question.
Does it show that you got kicked?
No, I just voted.
Okay.
Are you good?
Well...
It doesn't show the trauma guess.
Okay.
He's especially got his own computer, I guess.
That's correct.
Okay, council, under agenda, we have four add-ons today. The first one will be number 14, under new business. Approved report of change order, number one, for the Meadowview, number two, sewer lift station project for an increase of forty thousand, four hundred and six dollars and sixty-nine cents. Total of contract with increase, two hundred and twelve thousand, four hundred and six dollars and sixty-nine cents.
Do we need a motion?
Yes, sir.
Motion dead.
Second. A motion by Mr. Larkin, a second by Mr. Montgomery.
Audience input?
Do we have any public comment? Any comment from the council? Please cast your vote. That didn't have any agenda here. We've got no agenda. I'll look at this.
Can I have a do you pop up that time?
Got it.
The agenda should be on the right-hand side, I mean, on the left-hand side.
Next item? It is now.
Okay. The next item will be number 15, under new business, adopt resolution authorizing the acquisition of property through institution of exappropriation proceedings for a water project, the Shed Road to Airline Drive 42-inch water main project, and that'll be a first reading.
Make a motion and we add that to the agenda?
Second.
So we have a motion by Mr. Williams and a second by Councilman Darby. Any public comment? Any comments from the council? Yes, sir. Please come to the mic and state your name and your address.
I wonder if this is the proper time or not. You tell me if it's not. This is regarding this issue.
This is regarding the water project issue on Airline Road.
No, I need the one on Brownlee Road.
No, that's not this one.
Okay.
I'll let you know when we get to that one. Any other public comment? Comments from the council? Please cast your vote.
There it is.
Number 16, adopt a resolution authorizing the acquisition of property through institution of exappropriation proceedings for street and water projects in connection with the Walter OBB Carriageway Parkway North Extension Road project and Waterline project. And that'll be, that's under new business.
Make the motion we add?
A second.
So we have a first by Councilman Montgomery, a second by Councilman Darby. Any comments from the public? Comments from the council? Please cast your vote. Okay, we have one more add-on.
Yes, sir. One more add-on. It's going to be number 17, under new business, adopt a resolution authorizing the acquisition of property through institution of exappropriation proceedings for a street and traffic safety project in connection with two cross-access drives at Walmart Supercenter and Kroger Marketplace, and that's a first and final reading.
A move that we add?
Second. So we have a motion by Councilman Darby, a second by Councilman Harvey. Any comment from the public? Comment from the council? Please cast your vote. And now I need a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Shall move.
Hold on just one second, please. Mr. Montgomery, did yours not pop up again?
Dead. So we have a motion from Councilman Larkin.
To approve the agenda as amended.
And who's the second?
I'll second.
Councilman Williams seconded. Okay. Any comments from the council? Please cast your vote. Okay. Any ceremonial matters or recognition of guests? No committee reports?
No, sir.
Let's move on to unfinished business.
Adopt an ordinance to appropriate funds to cover construction costs for the Hamilton Road Drainage Lift Station Improvement Project for a total of one million, three hundred and twenty thousand dollars to come from the 2014 utility bond issue. Final reading.
Shall move. Second.
So we have a motion from Councilman Montgomery and a second from Councilman Larkin. Any comments from the public? Comments from the council? Please cast your vote. Drum roll.
I'm out.
I don't want to hit the wrong thing again.
I apologize for those who are here. We have a new system and sometimes it has glitches in the switch.
This is probably caused by Russian meddling.
Probably.
All in favor? Ah, any nays? Motion carries. Mayor, you're a nay.
It's locked up for some reason.
What do you think, fellas?
It's locked up. The program is locked up.
So we'll just do a voice?
Yes, sir.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Adopt an ordinance to appropriate funds to cover construction costs for the Shady Grove and Lynn Street Lift Station Improvement Project for a total of a hundred and seventy thousand dollars to come from the Sewer Capital and Contingency Fund and enter into a contract with Pulley Construction, Inc. for completion of work. Final reading.
Shall move.
Second. So we have a motion from Councilman Darby, a second from Councilman Larkin. Any comments from the public? Any comments from the council? And we'll do another voice. Vote those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries.
Adopt an ordinance implementing a budgetary control requiring a resolution to be approved by the Bossier City Council prior to the hiring or employment of any individual receiving wages, compensation, or remuneration for labor including temporary or contractual employment. Final reading.
Shall move. Second.
So we have a motion by Councilman Montgomery, a second by Councilman Williams. Any comments from the public? Any comments from the council? Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries.
Adopt an ordinance declaring approximately 150 air packs that do not meet the current NFPA standards surplus to the needs of the city and donating same to Juarez, Mexico for firefighting. Final reading.
Shall move. Second.
Motion by Councilman Montgomery, a second by Councilman Williams. Any comments from the audience? Any comments from the council? Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries.
Witness opening of sealed bids for bid number P-19-15 miscellaneous sewer lift station improvement project.
Counsel, the engineer's estimate and the budget for this project is one million, two hundred fifty-five thousand, nine hundred dollars. There's one addendum that changed the specs, contract documents, and drawings, provided questions and answers, and provided a list of the attendees to the mandatory pre-bid meeting. The first bid is from Axis Construction LLC. They acknowledged the addendum. The bid bond is included. It's for... It's for seven hundred ninety-two thousand dollars. Oh, there was alternate. So there's actually two amounts for the bid. There's alternate and the amount for the alternate is fifty-one thousand, two hundred.
What was the first one?
Seven hundred ninety-two thousand dollars even. Seven nine two zero zero zero. And alternate one is fifty-one two hundred, five one two zero zero. The second bid is from Dixie Overland Construction LLC. They acknowledged the addendum. The bid bond is included. The base price is one million, forty thousand, nine hundred eighty-eight dollars. That's one zero four zero nine eight eight point zero zero. An alternate one is eighty thousand dollars even. Eight zero 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 zero. The third bid is from Yorwick Construction Company, Inc. They acknowledged the addendum. The bid bond is included. The base bid is one million, one eighty-five, seven fifty-five. That's one one eight five, seven five five point zero zero. An alternate one is sixty-four thousand dollars. Six four zero zero zero. Ask that you accept the reading of these bids.
Shall move. Second.
We have a motion by Councilman Williams, a second by Councilman Larkin. Any public comment? Any comments from the council? Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries.
Witness opening of sealed bids for bid number 19-14 sewer subbase in B.C. 15.
The engineer's estimate and the budget is two million, four hundred twenty-two thousand. There are two addendums. The first addendum revised the bid form, made corrections to the contract specs, documents, and drawings, provided questions and answers, and had a list of attendees to the non-mandatory pre-bid meeting. Addendum two made changes to the specs, provided questions and answers, and a list of plan holders. The first bid is from Horseshoe Construction, Inc. They acknowledged the addendums. The bid bond is included. It's for one million, eight hundred ninety-four thousand, one hundred forty-two dollars and sixty cents. One eight nine four, one four two point six zero. The next bid is from J-Bar Construction. I have to disqualify this bid. They only acknowledged one of the two addendums. The next bid is from PM Construction and Rehab LLC. They acknowledged the addendums. The bid bond is included. The bid is for one million, nine hundred twenty-six thousand, seven hundred ninety-five dollars. One nine six two, seven nine five point zero zero. I'm gonna double-check this. There's no bid bond, so we have to disqualify this one as well.
The PM Construction?
Portland Utilities Construction. And I will have to disqualify it. There's no bid bond. So I think that's it. Ask that you accept the reading of these bids.
I'll make sure to accept reading. Motion by Councilman Larkin, second by Montgomery. Any comments from the public? Any comments from the council? Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries.
Hearing to review the recommendation of demolition and removal of a dilapidated structure located at the following legal address, 906 Anthony Street, A., Bossier City, Louisiana, 71112.
Good afternoon, Mayor, council. We sent the letter for the condemnation on this property in March. We ask that the building be repaired or demoed. This is to just the garage structure. It's not to the house itself, and there's an apartment above it. Condemnation letter's been filed. This building is severely eaten with termites, rot, and it's leaning to the front and to the left. It needs to come down. And Robin Harville's here.
Counsel, Robin Harville. I was appointed to attempt to provide notice to the property owner of the condemnation of the garage structure, which we reached out and did, and I'd like to inquire if anyone on behalf of the Doxys is present today?
Robin, I know Gary Doxy, he passed away years ago.
No succession's been opened and...
Linda, I haven't seen Linda in years.
No, and we made every effort to reach out and attempt to provide notice to those that would have an interest, and haven't received any type of response at all.
Okay. I make a motion. This thing's bad. It's been bad for a long time.
It is. Second. So we have a motion by Councilman Williams, a second by Councilman Montgomery. Any comments from the public? Any comments from the council? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries.
Adopt a zoning ordinance, first and final reading, favorable by MPC. Petitioner Patrick and Misty Smith, location 4300 Parkway, Bossier City, Louisiana, requests zoning amendment for RA Residential Agriculture to B3 General Business for a coffee shop.
Do we need a motion?
Second.
Who made the motion?
Tim.
Second. It's Councilman Larkin made the motion. Councilman Montgomery seconded. Comments from the public? Feel free to come up and state your name and your address, please.
We're Patrick and Misty. We didn't know if we needed to come up.
You're the owners.
Oh, yeah, we're the owners. Okay. So is there any public comment? And any comments from the council? Okay, so we can vote on this. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries.
Adopt a zoning ordinance, first and final reading, unfavorable by MPC. Petitioner Bossier Village Lane Properties LLC, location lots A, B, and C of Whittington subdivision, requests zoning amendment for RLD residential low-density to B3 general business for a proposed climate-controlled storage facility.
Mr. Chairman, I want to offer a motion on this particular proposal to remand it back to the Metropolitan Planning Commission to have an additional hearing. One of our choices in matters like this is to remand. It's appropriate when during the period of time that you collect information about a particular case, you find that the information is either in conflict or is new, and that the decision that's been brought forward is absent from having considered that information.
Phyllis, we got a problem with the agenda. Because that's...
Pardon me?
It says Bossier Village Lane on the agenda, but at the bottom it says Bo Hayes at 515 Barksdale Boulevard, on my agenda. And the next one also says... It says another one. Guess we left that one off the agenda.
So is this item number five?
On the paper agenda?
On the paper, she did say number five.
On my computer, it says...
Yeah, there's something going on, because I'm looking at it right now and it's perfectly fine. It's...
Yeah, my computer one won't open.
I second Mr. Larkin's motion.
So we'll go by, we'll use the paper agenda?
We're using the paper, because, I mean, what I have on the computer, it shows perfectly right. It shows the Whittington subdivision, lots A, B, and C of Whittington subdivision.
Do you have your paper agenda? Okay, so we have a motion from Councilman Larkin to remand this to the MPC. It's been seconded by Councilman Montgomery. So, sir, this would have been the issue you would have commented on, but there's been a motion to send this back to the MPC because new information has become available. So there'll be a hearing at the MPC where you could discuss the details of this particular issue. With the motion that is on the table, we can receive public comment concerning the decision to send this back to the MPC. So we need to, parliamentary procedure, we need to stick with the motion that is before us. Did you want to say something, Sam?
If it is remanded back, I'd just like the public to know, we will send out notice again within 300-foot radius of this site, but if they live outside that radius, they need to keep in contact with my staff and my office as to the date of this hearing. It could possibly be as early as August, but it's more than likely going to be September. So they just need to keep in contact with us, because that's why we put a sign out on the property, because we only notify within a 300-foot radius. So...
So this is Sam Marsiglia with the MPC. Just keep in contact with him when it comes before the MPC again.
They can call anybody. Anybody in the office should be able to answer that question when it would be on the agenda.
Okay, so we have a motion by Councilman Larkin and a second by Councilman Montgomery. Any comment concerning the decision to remand this to the MPC?
I think there's a speaker in it. Would you like to...
I just have one question. This is dealing with...
Wait, sir.
You have to come to the mic and state your name and address.
Please come to the mic and state your name and your address.
Larry, Larry Bryan. I live on Brownlee Road, 2404 Brownlee Road. This is for the rezoning of the Brownlee...
That's what the item is on the agenda.
Is it Whittington Estate or something like that?
That's the item on the agenda. The motion is to send this back to the MPC.
Okay.
Yes, sir. It's the Brownlee Road. The legal description of that property is Whittington Park, lots A, B, and C.
Okay, that's what confused me when I looked up to the agenda. So nothing can be said right now about that.
Not right now, because we're not going to vote on it if this passes. If it doesn't pass, then we'll deal with it and they'll allow you time to talk.
Okay, that's fine.
Okay.
It's the Whittington.
All good.
Okay, so any public comment on the decision to remand this to the MPC from the public? Any comment from the council? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay?
Abstained.
Okay, so the motion passes. So this will go to the MPC, and if you, like Sam said, if you live within a certain range, you get a notice, and if it's beyond that, just stay in touch with your friends and neighbors or call the MPC office to find out when it'll be addressed at the MPC. So we'll move on to item number six.
Adopt a zoning ordinance, first and final reading, favorable by MPC. Petitioner Bo Hayes, Bayou Jacks Holding LLC, location 515 Barksdale Boulevard, Bossier City, Louisiana. Request conditional use approval for on-premise consumption of high and low content alcohol at a proposed oyster and daiquiri bar.
Shall move. Second.
We have a motion by Councilman Montgomery, a second from Councilman Larkin. Any comments from the public? Any comments from the council? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries.
Adopt a zoning ordinance, first and final reading, favorable by MPC. Petitioner Bryce Colada, location 2328 Barksdale Boulevard, Bossier City, Louisiana. Request conditional use approval for on-premise consumption of high and low content alcohol at an event center.
Shall move. Second.
So we have a motion from Councilman Montgomery, a second from Councilman Williams. Any comments from the public? Comments from the council? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. And the motion carries.
Adopt a resolution authorizing the hiring of a part-time field maintenance worker at Brownlee Park for Parks and Recreation, first and final reading.
Shall move. Second.
We have a motion from Councilman Montgomery, a second from Councilman Harvey. Any comments from the public? Comments from the council? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries.
Adopt a resolution authorizing the hiring of one animal control officer for the Public Works Department, first and final reading.
Shall move. Second.
So we have a motion from Councilman Harvey, a second from Councilman Free. Any comments from the public? Comments from the council? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries.
Adopt a resolution providing for the employment of Foley and Judeel LLP as bond counsel for not exceeding eight million dollars in taxable water revenue bonds, Series 2019 of the City of Bossier City, State of Louisiana, providing for other matters in connection therewith, first and final reading.
Second.
A motion by Councilman Montgomery, a second from Councilman Larkin. Do we have any comments from the public? Comments from the council? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries.
Adopt a resolution authorizing the hiring of one police communications officer for the Bossier City Police Department, first and final reading.
Shall move. Second.
So we had a motion, was it Harvey?
Yes.
Councilman Harvey, a second from Councilman Free. Any comments from the public? Comments from the council? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries.
Approve parade permit fee waivers for the following airline, high school, homecoming parade, September 26, 2019, and the Green Acres Place HOA, July 4th parade, July 4th, 2019.
Shall move. Second.
Larkin?
Everybody.
Yeah, we had a lot on that one. Larkin made the motion, and I'll give to Councilman Free for a second.
Okay, it's just my...
Any comments from the audience? Comments from the council? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries.
Adopt an ordinance to declare that an emergency did exist in the City of Bossier City, which affected property, public health, and safety due to the requirement to restore sewer service along Waller Street at a cost of sixty thousand dollars to come from the Sewer Capital Contingency Funds, first and final reading.
Shall move.
We have a motion by Councilman Williams, a second by Councilman Larkin.
Hey, Ben.
Any comments from the audience?
I go second.
Oh, was it Montgomery? Second, I was Montgomery. Second, I was Councilman Montgomery. Counsel, any comments from the public? And any comments from the council?
Yeah, all as well.
Ben?
Ben, I know we got a couple things going on over there. Is that for the pump or is that for the sewer line that's done and messing with?
This change order is for the Meadowview Lift Station, and it's to reconcile that project. That project is complete, but the Meadowview work...
This is Waller Street.
This is Waller Street, sixty thousand dollars. Sewer service.
Item 13.
Yeah, that's, that's a, that's to replace that entire, excuse me, that's to replace the entire gravity line from manhole to manhole, about 500 feet of line there. It was old concrete pipe, and we couldn't, we couldn't feasibly find anything that we felt comfortable connecting to. So the plan here is to replace that entire line with brand-new PVC, reconnect all those folks, and get done with that. So...
Thank you, Ben.
Yes, sir.
Any other comments from the... Any other comments from the council? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries.
Approve report of change order number one for the Meadowview number two sewer lift station project for an increase of forty thousand four hundred six dollars and sixty-nine cents. Telegraph contract with increase, two hundred twelve thousand four hundred six dollars and sixty-nine cents.
So move.
Second.
So we have a motion from Councilman Montgomery, a second from Councilman Larkin. Any comments from the council? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries.
Adopt a resolution authorizing the acquisition of property through institution of expropriation proceedings for a water project, the Shed Road to Airline Drive forty-two inch water main project, first and final reading.
So move.
Second.
So we have a motion from Councilman Darby, a second from Councilman Williams. Any comments from the public? Any comments from the council? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries.
Adopt a resolution authorizing the acquisition of property through institution of expropriation proceedings for the street and water projects in connection with the Walter O Bigby Carriageway, Parkway North Extension Road project and water line project, first and final reading.
So move.
Second.
Which one is this, sixteen or seventeen?
This is sixteen, sir.
Sixteen.
This is number sixteen.
My screen was jumping around.
So we have a motion for Councilman Larkin, a second from Councilman Williams. Any comments from the public? And any comments from the council? All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries.
Adopt a resolution authorizing the acquisition of property through institution of expropriation proceedings for a street and traffic safety project in connection with two cross-access drives at Walmart Supercenter and Kroger Marketplace, first and final reading.
So move.
Second.
So we have a motion from Councilman Harvey, a second from Councilman Montgomery. Any comments from the public? Comments from the council?
Yes. You wanna go first? You wanna go?
I'm sure we got the same question.
Number one, I had asked originally about, you know, the feasibility of taking on the Kroger corporate, you know, so, and so forth, and also in, in light of that, whatever the answer is, how much is this gonna cost? Number one, the actual exchange. In other words, do we, before we start marching down this trail, I, I would like to know how much this is gonna cost potentially.
I know the construction cost for two driveways was estimated about sixty thousand dollars. And I know that we had the appraisals made that I've mentioned to you guys before. We had two appraisals made, and I think the higher appraisal for the properties we needed was about seventy thousand dollars. I'm estimating...
Hundred and fifty?
Hundred and fifty. And there'll be, no doubt, incidental cost. I assume court cost or all those things associated with expropriating. I'm not an expert on that.
What changed, I guess, since last week, we talked about it, that did we wanna do it? Who made that big decision? Yeah, I mean, I... That's the point, I guess. Yeah, I asked to, to, for an analysis to be done, and I just think that we ought, you know, let's not rush into something that we have no idea what we're getting into. That's all, and... Is it, is it gonna, how much is it gonna benefit us or benefit the stores? I mean, why doesn't, why doesn't one of them wanna do it?
Why does, why does...
Kroger, why doesn't Kroger, I guess, why don't, why don't they wanna do this project? And how's it gonna benefit us if we go to court and all that good stuff?
Well, it, it benefits the public by having access to either parking lot from either side without having to get out on the airline drive. That's why...
But we're building the Melrose Extension.
We are.
So that will take care of all the Walmart, and then the Kroger people can get back to Plantation as well. So, at, at the end of the day, you know, do we have a, I know Mr. Hall's not here, but, you know, a valid reason for, you know, to take this property through expropriation? I mean, in, in light of the fact we're doing these other things, do we really have a valid point that we, we, we know we would prevail in court?
Well, I, I don't think...
We're talking about a parking lot here, not a road.
Right, but I think, I, I'm comfortable saying it benefits public safety to stop cars from getting out on the airline drive to get from one parking lot to the other. And if we build Melrose, that still means if you're going from one parking lot to the other, you're gonna have to get on Melrose. You're gonna have to go out to airline drive.
No, you can go to Plantation and come back around.
There's two routes. You get out on airline drive and go across the front, or you drive out the back. You get on Plantation and get on George DeMille and circle around.
Right. Did, did we have a, a good meeting with Jimmy about this? And did you even talk to Jimmy about this? He's a lawyer.
True, we have had meetings, and it was, the sixty thousand dollars for the construction cost was actually approved by the council to be on this year's capital improvements projects.
But that, at the time, we didn't know we were gonna have to expropriate.
That's true.
So... Let's not confuse one with the other. That we automatically approved everything going forward in light of new circumstances that present itself as it has today.
The question was asked, had we talked about this before, and we have.
Oh, yes, I'm, I'm well aware.
And I would just suggest, or ask the council to, let's just not dog this project off right now.
We're not dogging it, we're asking rational, reasonable questions, I think.
Well, I don't disagree with you. If it gets to be too big of a legal quagmire, then we're gonna wanna retreat, but...
I'd like to make the motion we readdress this in two weeks after we've had time to visit with Mr. Hall. Before, second, I'm just saying, within the last week, we talked about this last week, didn't we? In, within the last week, did Jimmy say, yeah, let's go ahead with it, even though we make that decision? What do you say about the court case, the possibility of going to court? I mean, is, is, is it worth that?
Second.
You got a second?
We have a first and a second, don't we, on number seventeen?
Yes, we already had it, we, we, that was to adopt. But Mr. Montgomery, Mr. Montgomery made a motion to, well, you were starting to make a motion to continue it.
Yeah.
Yeah. That's what, I'd like to continue it for, till the next voting meeting, whatever date that is.
So we don't need it?
Substitute.
And then Mr. Williams...
To withdraw the original?
Mr. Williams...
I second it, yeah.
Seconded.
So we have a motion from Councilman Montgomery, a second from Councilman Williams to continue this in two weeks.
I just wanna say, I spoke to Mr. Hall about this yesterday when I got the original, the resolutions from him, and I asked him that Mr. Montgomery had some concerns about it and had it been discussed, and he said that they'd looked at it all options, and this was the only way to go. But I did ask him that question yesterday.
Well... But I'd still like...
I'm just saying that, that...
I'd still, I don't, there's no real rush, I don't think.
There's, there's no real rush.
We got times on our side on this one, so two weeks is not gonna be...
Counsel, if I may, just offer this. About two o'clock this afternoon, Walmart Real Estate called my office and asked permission to take down the fence and build a driveway over to Kroger's parking lot.
Well, they can't do that.
Swear to goodness. Uh, it was a voicemail, and I forwarded that to Gordon and to Jimmy.
Well, see, that solves our problem.
No, it doesn't.
Let them do it.
Walmart. Why? Well, because Kroger's not on board yet. That's a Walmart.
Yeah, well, let them go negotiate with Kroger. Just let them do it then. Let them, let them fight Kroger. I mean, it's, you know, why interject ourselves in, into this mix if we don't have to? You know, I, I, anyway, I'd just like to visit with Mr. Hall. Sure. If things, that's the only option, then I'll certainly support what the administration wishes going forward, so.
Mark, am I correct in stating that the part that Kroger is opposed is the part, is the connection directly in front of their store? That the connection west near Panda Express, is Kroger involved in that one? Or is that Panda Express and Walmart involved in that connection?
The driveway behind Panda Express would involve properties owned by Panda, Kroger, and Walmart.
So Kroger would be involved, okay.
Who owns the fence? So Walmart's gonna tear the fence down? Who really owns the fence?
Walmart paid to have the fence put up
I don't mean that.
at the request of Haynesville Mercantile to stop their plastic bags and other litter from blowing across the parking lot onto the field that is now Kroger.
Okay, so the real question is, I asked the wrong question. Who owns the land where the fence is at?
There's a property line that runs more or less where the fence is that divides Kroger and Walmart.
Little of each is the answer then, right?
Sir?
Little of each. Kroger and Walmart own the property. I mean, Walmart owns some, Kroger owns some.
That's right. The back of curb of each parking lot. There's a, there's a patch of ground between the back of curb of each parking lot, and the property line runs more or less down the center. And so if Walmart wanted to build the driveway, theoretically, they can only build up to the, where the fence is. They couldn't go the other ten feet to hook on to the Kroger parking lot.
It's really getting funny, isn't it?
Well...
Unless you went to Walmart at five o'clock today and then tried to get back out on airline, then it's not really funny. It was about twelve, twelve feet, I know.
I rode half across the, the land out there. Okay.
Any other comments from the public? Any other comments from the council?
You do.
So, we have a motion to continue this for two weeks. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Okay, any other comments? Mayor, do you have anything? Thank you. Any other comments? This meeting's adjourned.